I'd like to start by asking the Reverend Carl Flag from Mount Tabor Baptist Church to do our invocation. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Pickens if he'll do our pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity. Let us reverence our hearts unto God. God who has brought us through many dangers, toils, and snares. God who has kept us safe thus far along the journey. We pause now to say thank you, Lord. God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us individually and our community collectively. Lord, we thank you for the Board of County Commissioners. Dear God, our county legislators, our administrators, Lord. And dear God, the entire workforce. Lord, we just want to thank you. We pray this morning for the wisdom, the knowledge, the discernment, Lord. The understanding and the compassionate care that these leaders must present to our community. Lord, we just ask you, Lord, to continue to be in front of them, to lead them, be beside them, to guide them. And let the words of their mouth and the meditation of their heart be acceptable in your sight. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to honor those in the workforce on Labor Day, God. We thank you, Lord, for today, Grandparents' Day, Lord, for the many families that are being held together by caring and compassionate grandparents. And Lord, we thank you for this week, Patriots' Day, Lord, a day of remembrance, a day of prayer. A day that we can reflect, your Lord, on one of the most tragic events that happened in this our nation. God, we pray for Commissioner Turner, our chairman. We pray for Commissioner Harvey, Commissioner Pickens, Commissioner Rawls, Commissioner Goddard, Lord. God use them for your glory and your glory alone. Lord, we pray that their essential decisions and their conscientious deliberations be acceptable unto thee. Lord, even through this pandemic and all of the tough times that many families are encountering. Lord, bless them. And dear God, keep their families united and keep us all in perfect peace whose mind is stayed upon thee. And dear God, we will give you praise and glory and honor both now and forever. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Flag and thank you Commissioner Pickens.
Thank you.
Doing that this morning. The chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes listed on the agenda as item two.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Rawls to approve the minutes listed on the agenda. Is there any further additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'm going to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting and I'm going to to call to order the Port Authority workshop. Is it 9:05 yet? Yes, it is. It's 9:07. And the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the Port Authority minutes listed on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Port Authority minutes listed on the agenda under three A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda for the Port Authority. Is there any further additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any public comment on Port Authority items that were sent to us or that are on the call at this time? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to general discussion. Is there any general discussion on Port Authority issues this morning? Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few months back, we were contacted by Mr. Genu about the lease out there. How is that going? Have we heard anything more about that?
Ms. Young, do you want to take that or where are we at on that?
Amanda can give us an update on that.
Right, I'm still working on that. There were a few things where he indicated he wants to see some changes in that lease, but I'm going to finish up our lease on our end. Still haven't gotten any feedback from them on the items that they said they wanted to see included. And then we'll wait to see what their information back is.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Y'all give me just a second. I've lost my entire Zoom screen.
There you go. And your volume isn't issues though? Too loud? You got it?
Sorry about that, technical difficulties.
Okay.
Okay, so are you good so far with that? I think we're also discussing that issue this afternoon, some in workshop, aren't we? Did I see that on this afternoon's agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Just a second, Commissioner Harvey. Yes, Ms. Young?
You have a port item, port discussion at this afternoon's workshop, a proposal with, by another entity to lease a portion of the port, so.
Okay, different deal, different deal. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
That's kind of why I brought that up, Mr. Chairman, is because I don't want to interfere. I think it's kind of early to have that discussion on the workshop today if we're still hammering out a deal with Mr. Genu. So I just wanted to bring that up and see where we were at with that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Would you mind waiting until this afternoon for the rest of that discussion, Commissioner Harvey, if you want to pull it or not? It's certainly open for discussion.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Commissioner Rawls, did you have something? You're muted.
Okay, my spacebar is not working all of a sudden. So we got the splash pad up and running. I received a request from several people wanting to know why it is that the area around the splash pad is so wet. And you know, back at the inception of this, we talked about the possibility of adding in a research system instead of just wasting the water to the ground. I think one of the things that we're finding right now, especially with this rain that we've had, is putting more water out. The ground becomes saturated and just can't take anymore anyways. But I think we should get on our workshop agenda for the Port Authority to discuss the possibility of adding in the research system. And from memory, it was less than $50,000 to put it in. We have the money in Port Authority to do it. And it would keep us from having to pay the recurrent water bills to the city of Palaca and then just have the water waste on the ground, but that's all I want to discuss.
Okay, would you please bring that up in this afternoon's workshop, Commissioner Rawls, and we'll definitely discuss it under the Port Authority?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other general discussion for comments on the Port Authority items? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the Port Authority at this time and reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting. And we'll start with a presentation, a proclamation for Patriot Day and Day of Prayer, Service, and Remembrance. Who's going to take that? Mr. Suggs, do you know who's going to take that, sir? You're muted.
Yes, sir. I'll be more than happy to read it if you'd like for me to. It's a proclamation for September 11th. Usually one of the Commissioners will read it, but if you'd like, I'll take it right now, sir.
Well, hang on just a second, Terry, if you would. I actually will get a Commissioner to read that proclamation. I missed that it was a proclamation, but I shouldn't have. In that case, I haven't asked a Commissioner to read this yet this morning, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Harvey, do you have it available in front of you, sir?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Would you mind reading that proclamation for the board, please?
I would be glad to. Putnam County Proclamation that number 2020 dash Patriot Day and Day of Prayer, Service, and Remembrance. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured with courage and heroism the worst attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history. And whereas, in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas, community organizations and family members of nine eleven victims began observing the anniversary of September 11th as a charitable service day to honor the memorial of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including law enforcement officers, first responders, and volunteers. And whereas, Putnam County has many brave men and women serving our county who heroically, tirelessly, and courageously put their own well-being at risk into difficult, stressful, and often dangerous situations. And whereas, the Awakening America Alliance slash Cry Out America has called people to gather for prayer, our historic leaders have called for periods of prayer for our nation, and God has called his people to observe solemn assemblies for generations. And whereas, a solemn assembly is the day of restraint where religious and political believers gather in a serious nature to bring their petitions and prayer to God. And whereas, God has promised in the Bible in 2 Corinthians, chapter seven, verses 14 and 15. If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and forgive their sin and heal their land. Now my eyes shall be open and my ears attentive unto the prayer that is made in this place. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that September 11th is hereby recognized as Patriot Day and a Day of Prayer, Service, and Remembrance for the victims of the terrorist attacks on September 11th in Putnam County. And that citizens are called upon to honor the lives and memories of the lost through participation in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year. Be it further proclaimed that the citizens of Putnam County are urged to show their support, appreciation of our local heroes, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics, first responders, and volunteers of Putnam County who give of themselves to protect and serve their community. Thus proclaimed, this eighth day of September 2020. Mr. Chairman, I move this proclamation forward for approval.
Second.
To move a proclamation forward for approval by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Rawls. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to the next proclamation, which is four B. And again, I apologize for no advance warning, but Commissioner Rawls, do you have that available for you to read, please?
I do.
Would you mind?
This is a proclamation declaring September 17th, 20, September 17th through the 23rd, 2020 is Constitution Week in Putnam County, Florida. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes, sir. We got you.
Whereas, September 17th, 2020 marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution, United States of America, and the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2020 is hereby declared Constitution Week in Putnam County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commission urges all citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by diligently protecting their freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Remembering that the lost rights may never be regained duly proclaimed this eighth day of September 2020. Mr. Commissioner, I move approval of the proclamation.
A second.
Chairman, I take.
We have a motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Rawls and a second by Commissioner Pickens. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Rawls, for reading the proclamation. With that, we're going to move into a public comment. Is there anybody on the line today that wanted to give a verbal public comment? Ms. Young, do you know?
I know it's the only people online are here for the hearing.
Okay, so I don't see anybody. If anybody is online today for the reason for public comment, would you speak up now, please? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and open the consent agenda item number six for anyone that would like to pull any items from the consent agenda. I'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
Item E.
Mr. Goddard?
I have none.
Mr. Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none, but what about the addendum?
That's going to be discussed after the consent agenda.
Okay, good. I have none.
Yeah, it's not part of the consent agenda, Mr. Pickens. Okay, and I have none. So the chair will entertain a motion for to pass the consent agenda items A through K minus E.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harvey?
I move approval of items on the consent agenda A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, and K.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard to approve the consent agenda minus item E. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item E, page 73 in your packet, Commissioner Rawls. You're muted, Commissioner Rawls.
Sorry. Sorry. Right now, we're showing Matt Reynolds as Deputy County Budget Officer. Deputy County Administrator and Budget Officer. But in a couple of months, that's not going to be the case. He'll be taking his position as clerk. What is the intent to do with that position?
I don't know that this is the proper time to talk about it, but that's fine, Commissioner Rawls. Well, I'll turn that over to Mr. Suggs at this point because it's up to him to decide what happens, not us.
Right.
Yes, sir. No problem, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and thank you for the question, Commissioner Rawls. There will be a plan that will be put in place as we move forward. We got Mr. Reynolds for another three or four months. As you know, the election was just a couple, three weeks ago. So what we'll do is as we move forward, I will make the necessary organizational changes that we feel will benefit Putnam County as we move forward.
So at this time, we don't have a plan to have a budget officer? Are we looking to replace him with someone else internally? Are we going to advertise that or what are we going to do for budget?
Well, we have Mr. Reynolds until the end of December, so we have a budget officer in place until December. We will make the necessary changes to implement a budget officer or incorporate that duty into another position within the structure of Putnam County as time sees fit, but we're not going to rush into a decision today. We want to see where we're at organizationally as we move forward in the next two or three months after we finish up the budget cycle.
So did I understand you correctly, you're going to move it temporarily into another position that's already created?
No, sir. No, sir. What I said was we will move forward with a position of need at the appropriate time. As of right now, we still have Mr. Reynolds until December 31st. And we'll move forward that position as we see fit, to where it fits into the organizational restructuring.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval for item E on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard to approve item E on the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it. Hearing unanimously. Okay. Now we're going to talk about the item on the agenda that was the addendum to the agenda. And before we go any further on that, I'm going to turn that over to Deputy Administrator Matt Reynolds for some comments.
Yes, sir. This morning, we received a final proposal from Florida Blue. So the numbers in their final proposal are quite a bit different than the numbers that were presented in the matrix. And it just came in about 10 minutes before the meeting, so I think a prudent thing to do would be to pull it from the agenda. Send out this updated information that shows the option two from Sun Life and their updated final numbers and either call a special meeting later this week or push it to the 22nd, whatever the will of the Commissioners is regarding that.
Well, I would, if the Commissioners will allow me to speak a moment on this, I think we should pull it from the agenda at this time and have all of our information that's necessary in front of us when we make that decision. And then I'll leave it up to staff and to let me know, would you like me to call a special insurance meeting later in the week or move it to the 22nd as your recommendation? I'm willing to do either one. Do, Rich, do I need a motion to remove the addendum from the agenda or just to do so?
You can do that by consensus and y'all can either make a decision now on if you want to have a special meeting or you can have that conversation during the workshop too.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Friday, we're going to be together for the Patriots' Celebration. If there's any way, we could just do a quick meeting there. But I agree, we need to pull this item and see what these actual numbers are. Matt, I have a question for you. Are we in a time sensitive? Because our fiscal year is ending the end of this month. If we go with the 22nd, will that still give us time? Because we did not move our insurance, from my understanding, as we had talked about in years past, to a calendar year. So it's still following fiscal year. So do we have time for that to take place?
I was told this morning from Florida Blue that we, you know, that we can renew anytime before October 1.
But I mean, with that, what if that's Florida Blue, but what if the Sun Life, what would that? I think there's some questions we need to know before we try to move it to a September 22nd.
Yeah, that's something that I don't have an answer to right now for the Sun Life. That's something that I'll have to get. I think that's why Commissioner Turner was saying that, you know, let staff come back and let you know when the drop dead date might be.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Matt, the only thing I want to make sure of when we go through this is that we that we don't lose any options by putting it off too late.
Right.
We'll call a meeting. I need 24 hours minimum, I believe, Rich, on a situation that just won't wait. And so hopefully, if we can find out by maybe tomorrow, we could call one on Friday like Commissioner Harvey suggested. We're going to be down there anyhow and we can make that decision. So by consensus or raise a hand from the board, does that suit everybody? Okay, so that's going to be our plan, Matt and Terry. I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Suggs will be back, but when is your day when you can come back, Terry?
It's supposed to be tomorrow, sir.
It doesn't sound to me like talking to you, it's going to be tomorrow.
Well, I don't sound real healthy, but I seem to be doing much better. I appreciate it, but yeah, it's supposed to be tomorrow. I'll get with our epidemiologist and make sure I'm good to go.
Okay, well, if you're still coughing and sick and running a fever, you just, I don't care what the epidemiologist says, I just assume you I just assume you not show up around the commission offices.
I appreciate that, yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. And with that, we, with that item being pulled from the agenda today, we're going to move to the item number seven, the code enforcement fine reduction case. And I'm going to, I'm looking on my screen for Thomas Moore. Thomas, would you say something where you'd pop up on my screen?
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm still looking for you. Say some, say some more, you're not coming up on my screen.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir. Am I coming up now?
No, but go ahead and give us your, go ahead and give us your part of the agenda on this.
Okay, sir, the address is one oh nine Harbor Street, in Rock in Florida. Property owner's name is James William Saunders. The violation was unsafe mobile home. The original fine amount is eleven thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. The total cost of enforcement action was four thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars. The property owner purchased property at a tax deed sale. The property is compliant and the property owner is requesting a fine reduction. If granted, we recommend the fee to be paid within ninety days. And I do believe Mister Saunders is online.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mister Saunders, would you like to add anything to that at this point, sir?
Just that I invested in delinquent taxes for this property and, and I'm a retired school teacher. And this is like, kind of like my retirement work. And I thought I'd be investing in, in many Putnam County delinquent taxes. And, but this one, if, if this fine is not reduced, it's going to cost me money as opposed to helping me make money. And I just request that you consider granting as large a reduction as you can so I can continue to, to do this work for the county and for my own benefit.
Okay, thank you, Mister Saunders, for joining us today and for your comments. What, Commissioner Rawls?
I guess being consistent with our practices in the past, I would move that we reduce the fine by the administrative monthly cost of eleven hundred dollars for a total of three thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars if it can be paid within ninety days.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rawls to reduce the fine to three thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. And it should be paid within ninety days. Okay, we have a second by who?
Mister Pickens.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Yeah, let me, we have a motion by Commissioner Rawls and a second by Commissioner Pickens under discussion. Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Commissioner Rawls, I think your number might be off a little bit. Four, four, seven, four, minus eleven, one, one, one. It would be thirty-three, sixty-four.
Oh, I didn't catch the ten, you're right. Modify the motion, you're right, thirty-three, thirty-three, sixty-four.
We have amendment to the motion to reduce it to thirty-three, sixty-four to be paid within ninety days. Commissioner Pickens, is your second agree with that amendment to the motion? Okay, and while I know that usually you're supposed to, under Robert Rules of Order, you're supposed to vote on the amendment first. I'm going to take a point of privilege and skip that and just go straight to the amended motion. If no commissioners have a problem with that. And so we're going to, now, if there's no more further discussion, we're going to vote on the motion as amended at thirty-three hundred and sixty-four dollars to be paid within ninety days, I believe it was, wasn't it, Commissioner Rawls, ninety days? Yes, sir, within ninety days. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, aye. You're opposed, Mister Pickens?
Uh, just a little late on the, on the draw.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Let's try to do a little better there, Mister Commissioner Pickens.
I can do that.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Mister Chairman? I have seconded a motion before and voted against it myself, so I fully understand.
Well, just wanted to make sure I didn't tack that on him if it wasn't just. Okay, good deal. We're going to go to seven B, got you now, Thomas, go ahead.
Sir, the address is one sixteen Hilltop Trail, San Suma. Property owner is Randall Gordy. The violation was unpermitted mobile home. The original fine amount was nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The total cost of enforcement action is two thousand one hundred and five dollars. Property owner purchased property in January of two thousand twenty. They did not realize there were fines and liens on the property. They had cleaned the property and are requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves the fine reduction, we recommend the fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, is is the owner of record on the call with us, Mister Gordy, is he on the call this morning? Okay, I don't see him on my list of participants in the meeting, and so we're going to move forward. Commissioner Rawls?
As with the last one, I would move that we remove the administrative monthly fee of one thousand three hundred dollars. Reduce it to a total of one thousand eight hundred and five dollars to be paid within ninety days.
I'll second that, Mister Chairman.
I'm sorry, eight hundred and five dollars.
Eight hundred and five, yes.
That's what I thought.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rawls and a second by Commissioner Harvey to reduce the, the fee to eight hundred and five dollars. Is there any further discussion on the issue? I'm assuming that's to be paid within ninety days, Commissioner Rawls? Okay, is that okay with you, the second Commissioner Harvey?
Correct, sir, thank you.
Thank you, so, so the motion is to reduce to eight hundred and five dollars to be paid within ninety days. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, and with that, I'm going, thank you, commissioners, I'm going to, and thank you, Thomas, for that, for this morning. Commiss, we're going to move to the clerk of court comments, Mister Ten.
Morning, Mister Chairman, I spoke with Susan Frank this morning and we have no items, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mister Smith, for attending with us this morning. Appointments. Let's see. One second, please. I'm going to start with Commissioner Goddard, do you have any appointments this morning, sir?
No, sir, I have none.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to move to Commissioner Pickens.
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none this morning either. We did have a, a ZBOA appointment, I'm sure everybody saw. It's not on the agenda this morning, but it's, we got a resignation letter from an at-large member. So commissioners need to kind of keep in mind who that we would want to add to the ZBOA that would be a good fit for that position. And with that being said, we'll move out of appointments and we'll move into county administrators' comments.
Good morning, Mister Chairman and Commissioners. As you all are aware, within the last couple of weeks, I have tested positive for, for COVID. I've been quarantined here at the house since August twenty-fifth. That was a precautionary, my test results came back the fall on Tuesday. I am under house arrest until, till today. So hopefully, I'll get a, a clean bill of health and will be able to make it back to the office real soon. With that said, thank you all for your text messages and phone calls and checking on me as you have, I really appreciate that. But also want to thank staff for stepping in and doing everything that they needed to do in my absence. As you know, I've been available as much as possible by telephone and by Zoom call. And so things are still being done and getting done. And that's a testament to the team that we have put in place and it goes back to the item on the agenda today. And I'll thank you folks for, for approving that, that item agenda. But that's really all I have, Commissioner. But I'll, I'll be on the two o'clock call this afternoon as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Suggs. County Attorney Colonel Commando, do you have anything for us today, sir?
Thank you, Mister Chair, I do not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into a commissioner request at this time. I'm going to move to Commissioner Goddard.
I have none.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goddard, a commissioner request, Bill, Mister Pickens, Commissioner Pickens.
Um, I don't really have anything this morning, but I would like to discuss a little bit. We, I believe we all received an email about the possibility of the libraries opening. So I'd like to discuss that, maybe at the workshop just a little bit and get some input from Angela on that. So, and, and maybe so, so that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens, I believe the libraries have either been opened or they're supposed to open today. I think Miss Young would be the one to have the information on that. So I'll go ahead and ask her for a quick update on the opening of the libraries. If they're not already, they should be pretty quick. So thank you, Miss Young.
Yes, sir, thank you. We have met with both Angela and Miss Brown and we are working through a process. We're scheduled to open them on the fourteenth, just because the coordination between the staff, the library staff was pulled in order to staff the call center and we're having to rework the call center phone map tree to allow for employees to be able to cover both the incoming calls that we're still getting. We're still averaging over a hundred calls a day to that call center related to COVID. As well as fully staff the libraries on a, on a full-time basis. We have a provision and a plan in place, and I do see Miss Angela just popped in. Angela, feel free to add anything.
Yep, I've worked with Ryan at the EOC and we've, we've come together with a plan. So we are all set to reopen on the fourteenth. The only thing that I would like to put forward to the board is if they would like the meeting rooms to open as well in the libraries or just the libraries themselves.
I think at this time, in my opinion, as long as we're having virtual meetings here, they need to continue having virtual meetings at the library also. So that would be my opinion. But I'll certainly take a comment from the other board members. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, I, I agree with that too. I think opening up the libraries where they can have some, you know, people come in and be able to use the facilities with the restrictions, requirements that y'all sent in your email. I think that'd be a great first step. And I also would request that, that somebody from the county contacts municipalities, like the mayor and maybe the city administrator in Crescent City. Let them know what our intentions are of opening up, so they're aware of that. I can also interlock them. Or where the other libraries are, I think there's one in Melrose, correct?
Correct.
So they're aware of our intentions, so.
We can definitely do that.
All right, thank you. Is that, is that any of your comments, Commissioner Pickens?
Yes, it is.
Commissioner Rawls?
Um, I do have a request from the public for the commission to reconsider the vote to move the monument. If there's any interest in parties.
I appreciate that. Well, if you'll give me a chance, Commissioner Rawls, I'll, I'll say something about it. I think that, that the public has taken what we wanted to do different, which is not send it to the ballot, but make a decision ourselves. I think that, that the biggest thing that everybody needs to remember and understand is that.
Colonel Wells, Mister Smith, Sarah, they're all frozen.
Yeah, they're trying to reboot, I see we're, Commissioner Pickens left.
There's Chairman.
Yeah, something went haywire around here, not exactly sure what it was, so we're working on it short term and Commissioner Rawls, I, I'll go back to what I was saying, I, I, I don't think that that statue hasn't moved an inch or that memorial hasn't moved an inch. And the only way that the motion stated without, unequivocally, it had to be done by private money. And I haven't, the, that's, and that's after the committee comes up with the, with the recommendation for the board to vote on that, where it may or may not go at all. So, you know, I think we need to go through the motion here, but as much as I've been worn out even by you and your wife, as much as I've been worn out over this issue about not sending it to the ballot, I still think we did the right thing because we haven't disenfranchised anybody if the statue ever, never gets moved. And I haven't seen any money be raised for that issue yet. So, you know, I think that we need to go on with the committee that we're going to appoint this afternoon and let them work through the committee. And if they can't come up with a decision that suits this commissioner, then I'll be on board with you, Commissioner Rawls. I'll be on board with you to lock arms and tell you that, that the statue isn't going anywhere unless it's number one, done with private money. And number two, that it's put in, in a place that the community can rally around. So hopefully Jacob had that up and running back on YouTube again and I didn't just waste my, my breath.
I heard you, Mister Chairman.
I, I heard you, you're up, yep.
Okay.
I, I appreciate that, I was just, I was asked by somebody to bring it up, so.
Well, I, I appreciate the fact, and believe me, nobody understands how polarizing this is for the community than I do right now because somehow this got aimed at me. And so, I mean, my children have had threats on their business. It's been pretty polarizing in the community. But I'm telling you, I got shoulders broad enough to do what needs to be done. And what needs to be done here, we'll know after the committee gets done with what they're going to do. But I'm telling you right now, you know, the statue in St. John's County costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move it, is what I understand. So, you know, I'll, I'll, I will eagerly await to see if the, if the young people that, that decided to protest this situation have actually are able to raise that kind of money to move that statue. And with that, oh, did you have any other comments, Commissioner Rawls? Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I think you're trying to, there you are, you're back again. I do want to say a, a big welcome, a big thank you to Chief Ramay, Quinn Ramay is retiring today. And, you know, years and years and years of dedicated service to this county. And I just want him to know publicly how much I appreciate, I'm sure our whole entire board does, the work that he's been involved in from starting with the fire explorers and, and working his way all the way up through the ranks. Shows how dedicated people in Putnam County are. And I just wish and pray that Commissioner, I mean, Chief Ramay have a wonderful retirement, whatever he's going to do. And just look forward to the future of where he can get some most deserved rest for a while and, and regroup with his family and friends. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
I thank you, Commissioner Harvey. And I was going to make some comments today, but thanks to Commissioner Rawls, he helped me get a, get it done ahead of time. So with that being said, concerning the memorial and that it was going to take private money to do it. And it's not going to be a few dollars, it's going to be very expensive. So anyhow, we have a workshop at two o'clock this afternoon, but we have a So anyhow, we have a workshop at 2 o'clock this afternoon, but we have a public hearing at 5:05. So I'm not going to adjourn. I'm going to recess the Board of County Commissioners' meeting until 5:05 this afternoon. Thank you for everybody joining us this morning.
Thank you.